And then another big feature about this is the multi-use path on the north side of the roadway. Looking at the east side of Millview Road, you'll also see a three-lane section there as well. You'll see the two-way center turn lane. You'll see the north side multi-use path. And you'll see a sidewalk, a new sidewalk, on the south side because we filled in the ditch so we're able to actually expand that sidewalk all the way to the fire station. Looking at alternative two here, you'll see the north side continuous throughout the whole corridor. Again, you see the sidewalk east of Millview. That's a feature in all the alternatives where it would just be a good idea, we think, to put a sidewalk in up to the fire station. Alternative three here, west of Millview Road is the same as alternative one and two. You'll see a three-lane with a two-way center turn lane. And then you'll see the multi-use path on the north side of the road. East of Millview Road, it switches up a bit here. Here's where we go with a two-lane section with dedicated bike lanes on the street. In this one, because we have the dedicated bike lanes, we just have sidewalks on the north side, the same that's existing right now. And then on the south side would just be the new sidewalk that I kind of previously mentioned in the other alternatives. And then alternative four, it's going to be that three-lane cross-section, but you'll notice here a big difference. You'll see the on-street sharrows, which is just shared use between the bikes and vehicles. Because we have that, there's sidewalk on the north side that already exists right now. East of Millview would also be the sharrows and then two-lane section with sidewalk on north and south side. So east of Millview here fits really well only because it matches into the existing typical section of the recently completed project from Van Norwick to 31. So that would match the same there. And, um, yeah, so, and oh, another thing here, a hybrid option that could be done here is even though I'm showing sidewalk on the north side, we could potentially throw in multi-use path instead of the sidewalk. And this way, that would kind of be like a split-the-middle accommodation between maybe bicycle users that prefer to be off the street near the school and then maybe bicycle users that prefer to be on the street here. So could be a way to accommodate both. So I'll give it to Kelly to talk about the schedule here next, and then we can get in some questions after.
I think, for me, you. All right. Schedule. Where we are right now, we're in the Phase One study. Once we have selected alternative, like I mentioned, we will continue studying that with greater detail as far as our engineering studies. We get into more of the location drainage studies for one alignment versus all four. And we anticipate that to be completed by first quarter, early second quarter of 2023 with design approval from the feds and from IDOT. And also, once that's done, we'll move into the Phase Two phase, which is the design and land acquisition. And then the Phase Three construction is anticipated to start sometime in 2025. And here's just some general next steps over the next, I guess, six months to the end of the Phase One. Present the alternatives to a public stakeholder meeting. We anticipate that in September of '22. Select a preferred alternative and present to the city, FHWA, and IDOT in October of '22. And finalize preliminary engineering studies in February of '23. I'll hold public information meeting in February of '23 and submit draft PDR, Project Development Report, to IDOT in March 2023. We'll get their comments back, and hopefully we'll get those around, turn around pretty quickly, or anticipate, and it could be two months, IDOT, so it could take a little longer. All depends. And submit final PDR and attain design approval in May of '23. And then, once that happens, we can advance to Phase Two. With that, we will open up to any questions you have on those four alternatives that Jeremy just presented.
Okay. Questions?
Yep. Mark? Do we have, is enclosing the stormwater requirement? And do we know, do we have drainage issues over there? Because now we're forcing more water into our stormwater system, sending it directly to the river. And if there's not drainage issues, is that a thing we need to fix?
Yeah, yeah, the, is it required? No, if you have an urban cross-section, it will be. But given the tight right-of-way that's out there, if you want to facilitate sidewalk on the south side, it's going to be hard to keep that open ditch and want to have sidewalk on the south side. We still, obviously, there's sidewalk on the north side now. That can be turned into a bike path without, about 99% sure, without impacting that ditch. So a lot of this is going to depend on, well, there's also, like Jeremy has mentioned, there's also detention facilities that we'll probably likely need on this because we're adding more, more than one acre of impervious area, they call it. So we will have to find a place to have some detention potentially on this corridor. Depends on which alternative gets selected.
Okay.
Which you can't control. Go ahead.
I just want to, we do have drainage problems out there today along the north side. I think several aldermen are aware. We have ditch issues out there that are not draining.
Fill up all the time.
Alderman Lehman, I think you received complaints about the lack of drainage in that area.
In south of Main Street, the Whipple, Ellen, Evergreen, Nettle Roberts area, there used to be a floodplain that came up through there before it was ever developed. So there's some chronic drainage issues in the area that we'd really like to, you know, do.
Is that true east and west of Millview? Because that just, it just...
Most of it's east, east of Millview.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that's an opportunity west of Millview, again, that's a little bit more environmental to not show.
Well, west of Millview, you have the school's pond that comes out, and the school had all sorts of problems until they redid the field tile through the center of Moosehart's property.
So we don't want to add water to that. And that was one of the things when we did the other section of Main Street, I believe we made sure that the, the storm sewer that runs down Main Street is big enough to handle this when we did the original work from...
That's what Kelly was just talking about, that because we are adding, probably we'll reach the threshold for new impervious area, we'll, we'll have to do some stormwater management out here in the form of detention.
Mm-hmm. And our drainage engineers have done a full existing condition study on the drainage conditions. We're just to the point where we don't know what it's going to look like from a proposed alternative to be able to do the study for that. But the idea was to be able to contain it, control it, and fix any drainage problems that currently exist along this corridor.
Thank you.
Chris?
So for all the alternatives, is going to be land acquisition involved?
We're hoping no is the goal. The goal is to try to keep everything within the right-of-way that's there. That's why closed drainage system allows us to put in sidewalks if that's what the council wants, the city wants. If we go, keep it open ditches to the, to the east, I'm sorry, to the west, in front of the Moosehart property, it's going to be very difficult to get any sort of sidewalk on the south side and keep that an open ditch. So there's, there's give and take. The goal is with the urban cross-section, we believe we can do everything you want other than open ditch system and keep it within existing right-of-way. So there might be some small acquisitions, like at corner cuts, there might be one at Millview near the church in, in the park. But looking at existing right-of-way, your roadway already is on their right-of-way. So we might have to ask for a corner clip in order to put ADA compliant type ramps in or sidewalk in through that area.
But it'd be real minimal stuff. I mean, we're not talking about going on, you know, individual homeowners' properties and trying to get stuff when you're looking east of Millview.
No, especially on the north side, because there's already a sidewalk easement out there. The sidewalk that's out there, pretty much from the school east to Van Norwick, there's a five- or 10-foot easement that's out there. Because when you first look at the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way, it looks like it's outside right-of-way. Do a little more digging, we find out there's easements that exist there, and they were done a while back. So, so we would, the goal would be to keep the sidewalk where it's at and widen it toward the inside, not toward the outside.
Makes sense, all right.
We got one online. Abby, go ahead.
Thanks. Kelly, could you clarify for me these, the center turn lane?
Yep.
On the west of Millview, does that turn lane continue on all the way up to Randall? Or where does that stop?
Yes, we'd take that all the way to Randall. Randall already has like a three-lane cross-section because they have the left turn lane onto Randall, like westbound left turn lane. So that would be, rather than kind of bring it back down to two lanes and then widen it back out for three lanes, we'd just keep it the three-lane cross-section all the way to the intersection. Now, there was some studies we did at the intersection of Randall, because IDOT and the feds make us look at that intersection as part of this project when there's federal dollars involved. Now, we did determine, we ran the capacity analysis and, and what they call delay analysis, capacity analysis for the intersection. We determined that a right turn lane would be needed there, an eastbound, I'm sorry, westbound to northbound, right turn lane will be needed at that location.
Okay. But is the, is the continuous, I mean, right now, there's, right now, there's a left-hand turn lane getting into the high school.
That's right. That'll be continued west.
And then it goes down to two lanes until you get to Randall. Is the center turn lane, anytime we widen a road, we're going to increase traffic speeds. And it's wide open there. There's nothing on the sides of the road, which we'll get into my other question about cyclist safety. But just the added, the added asphalt at this point doesn't seem necessary during that, in the middle of that long stretch.
Well, there's a couple of things there we looked at. One of them is you'll have a lot of stacking that goes on. It's our understanding there's stacking that goes on for the eastbound to northbound into the school. So that left turn lane has a tendency during peak hour to stack up and block anybody that's going through that intersection. So that's an issue that causes some delay. And it has a tendency to stack up in front of the striping that's in front of the firehouse there, which is a safety concern. People shouldn't be pulling into that. Shouldn't and do is two different things. So we wanted to make sure they got a place to get, to get out of the way. So if they do, that left turn does stack up, the through movement, the eastbound through can continue to have a place to go and get through the, to the, to the stop sign or to the four-way stop. Now, also, another benefit to the continuous left turn lane is that the side streets to the west, when anybody wants to make a left, it stacks people up as well. So getting them off the through lane and into a center lane helps from a safety standpoint and a capacity standpoint. When I say safety, I'm talking, I'm talking more from a accident standpoint.
Okay.
The other, I'm sorry, Alderman Beck, I'm just going to jump in before you switch topics. The other advantage to a center turn lane there, although it may not happen in our lifetimes, is the development of Moosehart. When Moosehart develops one day, we don't know exactly where those driveways and those roadways will fall. So having that center turn lane allows for that flexibility.
Well, then, to my, to my other question, I'm, I'm concerned with, with this configuration being safe for cyclists on the road because I do anticipate, right now, the speed limit is, is it 30 or 35 down that stretch?
30.
So if we can, if we can likely assume that people are going closer to 40 often, the, the, the risk of pedestrian or cyclist injury, severe injury or death, you know, with every five miles per hour that a driver is going, that likelihood of, of injury or death goes up and up exponentially. So combining that level of traffic or that speed of traffic with cyclists on the road has me concerned. But I also am not sure if having a multi-use path only on one side of the road, can you tell me kind of how that traffic flow would go for a cyclist if we have only the multi-use path? Where that transitions at either end of the path into two-way traffic on, on the street?
Well, it depends on which alternative you're looking at. Like, if you go to alternative four, the idea is, is to have on-street through the entire corridor. So we would just continue what was done from Van Norwick to 31 on the previous project. That pretty much, the bottom right, if you see my screen, I got up there, the bottom right typical section is what currently exists east of Van Norwick. And we would continue that all the way to Millview. And then west of Millview, we're proposing you do the, the two-way left turn and keeping the bicyclists on the street as well, as is shared. However, as Jeremy mentioned, we could, because we have room, we could turn that existing five-foot sidewalk on the north side to an eight-foot, 10-foot path.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the alternative that I'm asking about. So if we have, if we have the cyclists off the roadway onto the shared use path, how, how do they get from the path, on and off the path?
Well, there wouldn't be, I mean, we could, we could, there's no signalized intersection through this corridor, except when you get to Randall. And there's no sidewalk on the south side of, south side of Randall on the southeast quadrant to even bring somebody across there. We could bring them across at Millview at a, at a four-way stop. But doing mid-block crossing is probably not recommended. If that, that's what you're asking?
I think what she's saying is if, if you were to have the multi-use path from Millview out to Randall, then where, they'd just have to, at the signalized intersection, which is just a stop sign, is where you transition back onto the street. I mean, similar to what you see now, today, when people are out there and they ride a bike and they don't feel comfortable riding in that section, they go over to the sidewalk that's alongside the high school and ride out along that.
And we could transition, go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead.
We can transition it to have the bike path all the way to Van Norwick. So, or we can do sidewalk, keep it on the north, and transition them at the school entrance if they want to go to an eight-foot path. Then we, there's a couple of things we can do. We're just trying to here to get some feedback. And one of the things, as we're proposing, you know, you got the diehard bicyclists would never use a path, and you got the ones that would, don't want to be on the road. I, I personally ride a lot, and I prefer to be on the path. I just don't trust people driving and texting. That's just me. That's where my comfort level is. But I also understand there's, there's riders that'll never want to be on the path. So that's why the option four gives the alternative to do both, if that's what you desire. What we're showing, just showing a sidewalk on the north side, but we could put a bike path in there as well as a shared, is an option.
And that's anywhere along from Van Norwick all the way out to Randall.
We could, yeah.
Could do that all the way out.
And so just as a reminder to City Council, we talked about an eight-foot path east of Van Norwick, between Van Norwick and Route 31. And at that time, council did not want to do an off-road path because of the density of driveways on the north side of Main Street east of Van Norwick. So going west from Van Norwick, the density is much less. There's, there's far fewer driveways, you know, per lineal foot than there, than there is going to the east in the more historic part of town. So that's where this option of putting an eight-foot path on the north side works, going west of Van Norwick. Staff, you know, staff and council maybe didn't see IDOT east of Van Norwick, and we ended up with what we have there. But it does work going west of Van Norwick.
Do we have the right-of-way room going from Van Norwick to Millview to have the three lanes there, to have turn lanes into the side streets that are there?
Yes.
Is there room in the right-of-way that we have to do that? Because I also feel like...
That'd be option, alternative number one.
No parking, remember?
Yeah.
Right, there would be no parking on it.
No on-street parking.
It's going to be tighter right-of-way.
One of the things that I feel like, when I've been out driving and looking at some of the streets that are designed like this with the, the shared bike lanes on the outside and a turn lane in the middle, that turn lane in the middle gives the driver of a car the opportunity to go over without going into oncoming traffic to go around a bike.
But they don't slow down. As somebody that rides their bike, they don't slow down.
I understand that. But to me, as a driver, I would much rather have the opportunity to go into an open lane than have to worry about going into oncoming traffic or have somebody come into oncoming traffic at me when I'm driving a car to go around a bike.
They'll slow down.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to train drivers to do, is to slow down until they have that opportunity to go around a bike.
Well, and that's something that we've talked about with doing the road diet on 31, is that part of that has to, that, that has to have a reduction in speed limit.
Yeah, but speed limits don't slow cars down. Street design slows cars down.
It's road design. That's why I like four, because it's narrower. And if you have people out there, and especially around the schools, there's kids, when they come out, there's kids all over the place crossing over...
Right, they don't go to sidewalks to cross the street.
Well, that's because we don't have sidewalks for them to properly cross. Like, part of this design is going to be also incorporate, I would say, incorporating crosswalks for the students where there's a safe place for them to cross. And that's where drivers know, hey, I got to stop. Definitely in front of the firehouse, it's an issue because there's a driveway for them to turn in, and that's where a lot of them will back up and turn to get in. And then you have people trying to turn left to go up at the crosswalk. So I think some of it is some management at the high school and the direction of the flow of traffic. Don't let people turn left out of there. Everybody goes right or something. But I'm, I'm with Abby. I like the narrower roads. I am concerned about the turn lane going up to Randall Road. But Gary, I mean, you bring up a good point. I mean, that's what went through my head, is the development there.
Well, I'll just say from past history, too, we had the opportunity to have a turn lane along Wilson Street between the high school and Van Norwick, and we chose not to do that as a council. And I think anybody that sat out there and waited for the line to get out of the way at Dairy Queen understands the opportunity that we missed there. And so you have to think about the development that's going to go in there, not today, not tomorrow, but in the future. And if we don't do that and have the turn lane there, we're going to regret it, and we're going to have to go back and redo it again. Just like I think what we're going to end up having to do when the Siemens property gets developed.
I'd like to suggest, I think there's really good arguments on both sides. And remember, this is just taking the next step of going to seeking input from the public. So east of Millview, let's just do east of Millview now. East of Millview, you know, we could do the, the two-lane section with the eight-foot path on the north side. It sounds like the eight-foot path, I'm, again, I'm not going to speak for council, but it almost sounds like council wants the eight-foot path the entire length. Seems to be a resounding feat. But we could do the two-lane section, eight-foot path on the north side, five-foot path on the south side, east of Millview. And for the west of Millview, you could do both options to the public. You can have the two-lane section on the, on the west, and you could have the three-lane section on the west and kind of get public feedback. Say what they want.
I'd like to have sharrows on all of it, no matter what, what design we decide to do or what sidewalk or pathway we have. So that way, it's noted to the rest of the public that bikes are supposed to be there and can be there.
Nick?
Yeah, well, I was going to ask for input on two questions. First, east of Millview, is there an issue with not, today we don't have a, a middle lane? Are the businesses requesting it? Is anybody wanting it? Is there concerns traffic-wise east of?
There's, there's no businesses in, in, other than the Elens at the end of it, right at Van Norwick. But the traffic will back up at different times a day when somebody's waiting to turn left and you can't turn because there's a steady stream of cars coming. So if you had a turn lane to queue people into, you'd be able to have traffic proceed through there.
Okay. And then second, on the bike path, I don't, I certainly don't have a resounding opinion. So I didn't hear enough from, from everyone else. But is there a preference from like the Bike Commission as far as what's a better use for bikers? I mean, there's three different options there. And I don't, I like them, I mean, the fact that there's something for bikers makes me happy, but I don't know if there's a, a preference. So in all of these...
I think they're here, so we want to make sure we hear from them.
Do you want to finish with your comments?
Yeah, we're going to finish with the council comments, and then we'll get the Bike Commission up here to comment. So Abby, go ahead.
Thanks. I wanted to follow up on a comment you made, Alan, about, about development and having to think about future development. And I'm thinking about our strategic plan and how traffic calming and slowing down traffic is in that. So again, just being mindful of the width of the road is going to increase traffic speeds. And, and also to be, to consider that, you know, we can only, we can only maximize one value, variable here. We can either maximize speed or we can maximize safety, and we can't, we can't maximize both. So slowing, slowing the traffic down may seem really inconvenient, but it does keep people safer. I was listening to something the other day about the, the traffic during COVID, right? That, that even though vehicle miles traveled reduced, that traffic fatalities stayed the same or even increased. And they're realizing that the thing that's keeping us safe in our cars and the reason that we're not dying at a higher rate than we are is because of traffic congestion. Because there's so many of us on the road that we have to go slower, and so we get into fatal crashes less. So, and I'm thinking to my own experience, driving around the high school as a driver, as a high school driver, and that is the scariest place to be a driver in the world. So making all those students drive slower is fine in my book for a couple times during the day. So yes, I want to be mindful of development, but I also want to be mindful of the strategic plan and the vision that we've put in place as being a really safe and comfortable place to walk and bike. And continually prioritizing speed over safety is not going to get us to that city where we are a safe place to walk and bike.
Sarah, go ahead.
Thank you. Those are some good points that Alderman Beck just had. On the note of cyclists, I like the option four where there are bike lanes on the road in the, um, let's see, three, okay. The east of Millview, it doesn't look like that road has been widened at all. I don't know if that's just the way the picture looks. There are bike lanes painted on there, so I just wanted to know, will it be wider or are we just adding the signs that say biking? As someone who rides a lot, I do prefer to ride on the road. And when someone is traveling very quickly on a bicycle, like 20 miles an hour, I don't want them on a path because that's where my kids are. So my question is, is that road staying the same width?
All right. So right now, we have two 11-foot lanes out there and then two three-foot shoulders. So it's going to be 28 feet wide existing.
Okay.
And then, okay, I can tell you right now, though, because of the IDOT standards, we have to make the road at least 30 feet wide. So it will be wider, just to bring it up to the current design standards. And that's just mostly for emergency vehicles to be able to pass if cars are on the side of the road. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Alan?
Mark? Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? Chief's had his hand up here. Go ahead.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to remind the council that this is our primary response route, Station Two, present. And once this, all these alternatives put in, I see curbs on the street. So ability of the cars to move right, passage, a passage lane for my emergency vehicles, primarily from Van Norwick to Randall is a concern here. Currently running 12 calls a day, present. High school can be rather challenging for my emergency vehicles to get through, and that's our primary route to get east of Van Norwick to move south, move south from that location. So consideration as you look at narrowing the road. I do understand many of Alderman's concerns about trying to reduce the speed by narrowing the road. Also, I just have to make you aware of my concern trying to move emergency vehicles to electric traffic in the same corridor, at least from Van Norwick. Thank you.
Mark? Yeah, I agree with a lot that Abby said, and the only thing that, because I'm not a big fan of the, the middle turn lane all the way to Randall. I mean, at some point, if there's development, have a developer pay to expand the road and put in a middle turn lane where it needs to be. I would support it being, you know, going west past the fire station so that it eases any congestion right in that area. But I just don't see the need to have that all the way to Randall. I don't, certainly don't see the need of it east of Millview, despite the concerns. Again, now you're in a neighborhood. Let's, we should, I live on a, on a four-lane highway, and the speeds are ridiculous. And so if you're going to widen the road, let's widen it because we want sharrows and bike lanes and, and that type of thing, not because we want to make cars move faster. So that's, I'm totally against having three lanes all the way to Randall. It's just, there's like one or two streets to turn off onto. It should not be an issue.
Yeah.
Okay, I have multiple thoughts and comments. I live right off of Main Street, right where we're talking about. I've been there for about 10 years. I'm a daily pedestrian and cyclist in this area. I have two, I guess, teenagers now who often are in this area also. And so I have a lot of thoughts about the speed and the ability to get to the high school and get downtown Batavia safely. I can tell you already, west of Millview, people do not go 30 miles per hour there. They go closer to 40. And that's without a wide road. So I think if we do add that turn lane in the middle, I, I agree with Abby that we're just going to see speed increasing there and not... just going to see speed increasing there and not decreasing, especially because there's nothing else visually to even slow people down. When you get east of Millview, you're more in the neighborhoods. You have the driveways, the side roads, it just visually, people slow down sometimes there. But west, it just feels like a highway. There's three types of cyclists we need to be considering here. We have casual adult cyclists, we have children, and we have people like Sarah and, you know, Jen here, who are more serious cyclists. And casual riders don't really want to be in the road with people who are going 40 miles per hour. It's not my comfort zone.
Me neither.
So we just need, you know, being the high school there, there's a lot of people, a lot of children who get to the school on cycles or walking, and we need to take that into consideration. Let's see here. I'm curious if Chief Yule is online. I'm curious right now, do we have many accidents on Main Street with people turning and traffic getting backed up? I'm, like, is that even a thing that we deal with?
He is not online this evening, but I can get the statistics for any vehicular accidents on Main Street.
Because I know it's not convenient-
Oh, you have it?
Yeah, we have a crash, we did a crash analysis on this corridor. Nothing outside the ordinary you'd normally see on a facility like this.
Yeah.
We look at that to see if there's any problems that we, you know, need to be aware of. A lot of them are like kind of rear-end type accidents at the four-way stop.
Right. I tend to think, I agree with Abby, that if you're forced to slow down and wait for people to turn, it just, it's keeping traffic calmer. And as soon as you put that middle lane in, the turning lane, there's no reason for people to even think about slowing down. And I don't think we want that in our neighborhoods right now. A middle turn lane is not needed in neighborhoods, so. And I definitely support a south-side sidewalk. So get rid of the open drain and put a sidewalk there.
Sarah, did you have another question? Hand up.
Nope, I just had not taken my hand down. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody else on the council have comments? Jen?
Yeah, the other thing that I like about the Sheroes is it continues on to what we've already put on there. I think that if we go from a Shero to a bike lane to a path, it just makes that whole road really confusing. And we want to send a message of the roads are shared by the bicycles. So I think having the Sheroes all the way down is definitely something that we need to do. Whether we do the, also adding the eight-foot bike path or multi-use.
Okay.
Tony?
Yeah, am I correct in assuming the intersection at Millview at the high school there will still have the same, same turning lanes? You know, westbound has a right-hand turn and a left-hand turn lane.
That's correct. And we did look at alternatives for that intersection. As part of our study, we looked at the existing four-way stop. We looked at potential for signals, which it did not meet signal warrants, which is required by state to have to meet certain, I don't know how many warrants there are, 12 warrants. It didn't meet any warrants to justify signals until after 2050, I think it was. We project traffic out to like 2050. We get it signed off by CMAP. And it didn't justify signals. We also looked at a roundabout at that location. If you're building it new and there was no school, no park, no church there, yeah, roundabout might be something to consider, but given the fact that's a park there, there's some federal issues we run into, what they call the 4F. They frown on when you're taking property from a park, especially when you have another alternative that works, like the four-way stop continuing to work. So yes, the configuration will stay the same. Now that we do change some of the storage lengths to justify, but as far as the lane configuration, doesn't change, correct?
Yeah, so if you notice now, some of the lanes are really short, some of them are almost all-
That's, that's a problem at the start.
So as part of this bringing up to current standards, we're going to increase the storage length and tape the length to meet the new standards. So it'd be designed for 35 miles per hour design speed out there. And so it'd be increasing all of them to what they're supposed to be, which, yeah, just to help in all directions. And actually doing it this way, it'll be ready for a signal if ever in the future that's chosen. But it'll just be, you just have to do the signal. That's it. Everything else will be ready to go.
And we'll design that intersection to accommodate signals for the future. We're not going to build an intersection that has to be reconstructed when signals get put in. Things change, things may develop in Mooseheart, who knows? But if that changed traffic patterns, intersection will just be a matter of adding signals at that point versus reconfiguring it.
It'd be by then more flying cars.
Yeah. Anything else? If we have any more comments here from council? If not, I'd like to, John, do you want to come up? Come on up? I didn't think you'd come down here just to listen to us.
Yeah, thank you all. That's exciting. I think it's, you know, I'm sitting here like thinking what a great opportunity we have to do something really good for bicycles and pedestrians and our community. There's, I wanted to comment on the designs. And we talked about this last night, and I just ran by my comments to see if everybody's in agreement, because we were in agreement last night, I wanted to make sure. Our preference is to create calm traffic anytime bikes and pedestrians are involved. I would say almost none of these designs do that except for the fourth one possibly because of Sheroes. Sheroes calm traffic when speeds are already low, but they do not when they're high. And if you have a center turn lane that runs from Millview to Randall, the speed is going to be high. So our preference though is to have bike lanes with traffic so that that narrows the scope of the travel, of the vehicles going through and makes them slow down. It calms them and it gives the bikers a safe and designated area rather than a side path. A side path, unless you've got it going both directions, and it's still very confusing for traffic, because you would force all of the bicycles on one side of the road. So you would have bicycles going both directions and traffic that intersects with that doesn't know, they look left, right, look left again, and all of a sudden a bike comes the other direction that they don't expect. So side paths are not good, safe design for bicycles in this. So our first choice would be to have lanes all the way through and then a side path and then Sheroes as the kind of third or fallback. Just trying to think. Oh, the other part of that is that this corridor has been talked about for years as the major east-west corridor for bicycles, and we're starting to try to work on that. And so this becomes absolutely critical that we get it right because we're starting to try and engage Kane County and do a nice crossing at Randall. And I'm not sure if, if Sheroes or a side path quite accomplish that. I think doing lanes all the way through really does accomplish that, so.
Kelly, can you put up alternative three on the screen? That has what John's describing.
Thank you.
At least eastern. And the eastern section of it.
But just picture that, east of Millview, just picture that saying, go.
Yeah, that's exactly what we would recommend, and that would be our ideal. And that I think would accommodate emergency vehicles too. I was sitting there thinking that through, like that I think solves some other problems. But I'm not, I'm really scared about the center turn lane, particularly, you know, there's a quarter mile there that wouldn't be used. That, we don't need stack up like that there. But we'll have cars going 10, 15 miles over the speed limit in that area. And then if you put Sheroes on the road and you do that, then you're like really asking for trouble, I think, so. Sorry, I didn't mean to, if I repeated myself. Let me just make sure I made.
Yeah, and alternative three, from what I'm reading here, that would be, would give you an extra foot on the width of the road compared to four with the Sheroes. Because the bike lane would be dedicated as four feet on each side.
Yeah, I think when I saw that, when he pulled it up, I think you'd have to go two feet wider than what you've already got.
Yeah.
So instead of 28, it would be 30 feet wide.
So the travel lanes are remaining 11 feet.
So you're 30 now and you'd have to go 32.
Yeah, okay.
But we would recommend going that whole stretch.
The curb picks up a foot on each side then, right?
Yeah, so it'd be 32 with the dedicated bike lanes and then 30 now.
Okay.
It will never go 130 just because of the-
See, so that's almost a no-brainer in my, sorry. The other thing I didn't talk about, we are having a lot of problems with bicycles on sidewalks, and so we would really like to do away with side paths because how do you differentiate between a side path and a sidewalk? You know, so it's very clear, if there's a bike path there, that's where you should be, or bike lane, excuse me.
And the thing I've noticed lately too with people on bikes on sidewalks is they don't obey the stop signs that are at the corners because they're on the sidewalk, so they don't feel like they have to obey the rules of the road.
They're pedestrians.
They just keep going.
Which they're not.
And then, yeah, and then that becomes very, you know, me, very dangerous for the bicyclists when you're in a 7,000-pound truck and they just shoot across the road in front of you.
We don't want them on the sidewalks. At all.
I would love to see a campaign where we put signs along the way that says, bikes don't belong on sidewalks.
Yeah, maybe like the slow down, we could do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway. Gary?
Putting on the other hat, which is always the funding hat, just for, and it shouldn't, this should not be a driving factor, but it's just a one in a positive box. If you went with alternate three with the bike lanes and we retained the sidewalk on the north side, the existing sidewalk out there is in really good condition.
Doesn't have to be touched.
It's not going to have to be touched. We're going to give it a thousand-plus feet of sidewalk that you don't have to be.
Right.
Cool.
And that was the other thing I was going to ask tonight was, is if we pick one of those where we leave a sidewalk over there, that whole section is relatively new.
Yeah.
And so it would just be filling in the ditch out there and changing the grading to drain on the north side of the road, whatever we do with the road.
Alan?
Yes?
Just to speak to what John was saying. So when I come out of Roberts Lane on my bike, I cross Main Street to the north side, get on the sidewalk, ride my bike down the sidewalk until I get to Van Norwick, and then I cross back over to get into the bike lane, where I do feel safe because it's a more or less designated bike lane, except for dodging cars that are parked on the street.
It's just like being a pedestrian and living on the south side, which both of us do.
Yes, yeah.
You know, you have to go to the north side, then if you were on your way out to the park, you'd have to cross Main Street, walk down the sidewalk, go out to the high school or wherever, cross back over Main Street to get to the park.
And I'll just say this as, because it's on topic, but Main Street, certain times of the day is not safe to cross for a pedestrian, especially a younger one. So without having that sidewalk there on the south side, you have children standing on just very small shoulder-to-the-road waiting to cross to get to the sidewalk. I'm, I've always been uncomfortable with that. So it would be very nice to have a sidewalk so that at least people can walk on it until they get to a stop sign where they could safely cross.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
And something else that I thought about when we've talked about, you know, slowing speeds down and everything on this, at some point, do we want to discuss having another stop sign somewhere on the Main Street to slow traffic down? I know, and Gary's not going to want to listen to that.
Stop signs are not slowing devices.
But when you have to stop for that, it meters the traffic through. I mean, we went through this when we decided to put stop signs on Wilson and Main Street at the high school to be able to allow people to meter their way through there. And we argued whether we should try to get a light or anything else there, and they work and they keep people flowing through the intersections. And you do have to take time and it does slow traffic down until they get through the intersection and open it wide up.
And then they race, yeah.
Right, away from the stop sign.
So that, generally, when you get a series of stop signs in between, you end up getting faster traffic between them.
In fact, on Main Street in particular, I think I've heard the most complaints about people rolling through stop signs and never stopping, and we have to up enforcement from time to time.
McKee Street's bad.
Yes.
That's another one.
So where do we, where do we as a council think? I mean, I know we're not making decisions tonight, but do we lean towards trying to do a two-lane road, whether we go with Sheroes or bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides of the street? I mean, I think that's what I would like to see and what I think's going on here. I think that's where we want to go.
Yeah, so alternative three, but both east and west.
Of Millview. So treat it as the same street from Van Norwick to Randall. And then deal with the eventual turn lanes at the west end when that gets developed.
And I would extend the middle turn lane just a little further for the high school, extend that a little further west, like past the fire station so that gives a little bit more width in that area if something happens in the morning or in the evening when there's a lot of cars there.
And the other thing, I think if we're really going to look at that, we also ought to discuss with the school district and do a right-only out of there at the west end of the high school lot, just like it is on the east end on Wilson Street. It's a right-only, right in, right in and right out.
Yep.
And I think that, you know, then it puts people at the signalized intersection, stop sign.